Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. The notice requirements provided in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given and a new schedule of meetings. The spots were Borough Council on December 30th, 2016. The new schedule was transmitted to the Home News Tribune and Sentinel. It was filed with the clerk of the Borough of Spotswood. It was posted in the Spotswood Municipal Building located at 77 Summer Hill Road. Roll call, please.
Councilman Stolen?
Here.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Here.
Councilman Malillo?
Here.
Councilman Rivera?
Here.
Council President Ritchie?
Here.
Mayor Sealy?
Here.
I'm going to salute the cloud. We have an ordinance on second reading. This is the public hearing. Ordinance 2017-05-J was posted in a municipal building on June 20th, 2017, and advertised by summary in a Home News Tribune, June 22nd. Public hearing was set for July 17th, 2017. Bond ordinance providing for the cleaning, cement lining, and replacement of water mains within the Cotted Streets area appropriating $1,247,000. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,247,000 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof authorized in and by the Borough of Spotswood in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Make a motion to openness for a public hearing?
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this ordinance tonight?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
(inaudible)
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Here.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes. Make a motion that ordinance 2017-05-J be adopted.
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes.
We have a second ordinance on public hearing. Ordinance 2017-06-J was posted in a municipal building on June 20th, 2017, and advertised by summary in a Home News Tribune on June 22nd. Public hearing was set for July 17th, 2017. Bond ordinance providing for the planning and design of various roadway and utility improvements within the Cotted Streets area appropriating $190,000. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $180,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof authorized in and by the Borough of Spotswood in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey.
Motion openness for a public hearing?
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes. This time, I'd like to invite anyone who would like to come forward and discuss this particular ordinance to come up now.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes. Make a motion that ordinance 2017-06-J be adopted.
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading. Public hearing is set for August 14th. Ordinance 2017-07-JU, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Spotswood by amending Chapter 2, Borough Council, Article 2 by amending Section 2-4, compensation, and Article 4, mayor and administrative organization by amending Section 2-24-G, mayor.
Make a motion to accept this and set the public hearing for August 14th, 2017.
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
No.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes.
Okay, we have resolutions under consent agenda, but we will be pulling Resolution 2017-118 and read it separately. Council President and council members, I need a motion to accept resolutions on consent agenda, Resolutions 2017-112 to 2017-117 and 2017-119 to 120.
Make a motion to pass the resolutions mentioned?
Second.
That was a good way.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes.
We have Resolution 2017-118. It's a resolution off the consent agenda. Resolution urging the state legislature to extend the 2% cap on police and fire arbitration contract awards. Whereas local municipalities require specific tools to address the rising cost of municipal government, and whereas in July 2010, the governor and New Jersey state legislature enacted a permanent 2% cap on municipal and school board tax levies with limited exceptions that did not include police and fire arbitration contract awards. And whereas salary costs to a great extent drive property tax increases, and whereas in December 2010, the legislature unanimously approved and the governor enacted a temporary 2% cap on police and fire arbitration contract awards in an effort to control increasing salary costs and provide a solution to assist local governments in keeping property taxes down and costs under control. And whereas December 2010, legislation included an April 1st, 2014 sunset, the 2% arbitration cap while the 2% property tax levy remained permanent for municipalities and school boards. And whereas in June 2014, the legislature unanimously approved, the governor enacted an extension to December 31st, 2017, for the 2% arbitration cap. However, the 2% property tax levy cap continues to remain permanent without an exemption for police and fire arbitration contract awards. And whereas municipalities continue efforts to contain costs and provide vital services to residents within 2% property tax levy, while the New Jersey economy remains sluggish and taxpayers struggle to keep their homes and pay their taxes. And whereas, we recognize that this change in arbitration reform needs a longer time to mature in order to see the benefits of the legislation and its actual impact on the cost of local government budgets and the impact on taxpayers. And whereas, the final report and recommendations of the Police and Fire Public Interest Arbitration Impact Task Force, which was established in December 2010, legislation is not due until the same day as the expiration of the cap on interest arbitration awards, December 31st, 2017. And whereas, we recognize it is now time for our taxpayers to benefit directly from the cost-saving measures, as many police and fire contracts will come due for negotiation after a sunset date. And whereas, if the cap on interest arbitration expires while the 2% levy cap remains in effect, municipalities will be forced to reduce or eliminate municipal services in order to fund interest arbitration awards. Now therefore, be it resolved that the governing body of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey urges the legislature to extend 2% cap on police and fire arbitration contract awards for five more years, at which time the legislation will have hard data to examine and then make a final decision as to whether this law should be made permanent. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is forwarded to Assemblymen Daniel Benson, Assemblyman Wayne D'Angelo, Senator Linda Greenstein, Senator Robert Menendez, Senator Cory Booker, Lieutenant Governor Kim Guadano, Governor Chris Christie, Aaron Fitchner, Ph.D., Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development, and Michael J. Darcy, CAE, Executive Director of the New Jersey State League of Municipalities.
Make a motion to pass the resolution?
Second.
Councilman Stolen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Malillo?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Stay.
Council President Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, we have two applications from a couple people that want to join the Fire Department's cadet members, Kyle Koch and Mitchell Mead. If you're here, stand up.
Hi, Kyle's on vacation.
I'm sorry?
He's definitely on vacation.
Kyle's on vacation?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept Kyle and Mitchell into the Fire Department?
Absolutely, and thank you.
Second that. Okay. (applause) You can sit out now.
Doesn't that make you the largest family in Spotswood Fire right now?
Third generation.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Kev, is this third generation?
Oh, yeah.
Third generation of me serving the Spotswood Fire Department. Thank you, and thank you all for your service.[695.12][695.12](applause)
Comments? We'll open it up to liaisons and department heads. John?
All right. Okay. Karen Well, principal of Appleby School. Spent 40 years, I'll give it a 40, years at the Board of Education. Spent 15 years as the principal of Appleby. A giant lady, a well-liked lady. She's going to retire in September the 1st. And she'll be missed. Nancy Torciano will fall into Appleby as a principal from Sholley into Appleby. Sholley and Memorial, it's still up in the air, they're reviewing people for the two schools as principals. Board of Education has a meeting tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, at the high school, at the library. So if you will attend that, it's going to be there 7 o'clock tomorrow night. Board of Education, very important meeting. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you, John. Kurt?
Well, we're in the middle of summer, but it's time to set our fall pancake breakfast. And I just wanted to get the date pinned down because they're going to be printing up like a recreation calendar and they want to put that in there. So we always do it the Sunday before Halloween, which is the 29th this year. So if we want to do that, Ed, if you would be able to check the haul for us?
Sure.
And see if we can get that pinned down. Rolls around again.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
When do you want all our replies on the 29th? Within a week or two weeks?
Yes, they want to print this in the beginning of August, so we should know.
Ed, just check first, and then if it's okay with the haul, then we'll just all chip in.
Okay, I'll have that answer tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, Marge?
I just have a couple quicks. Safe exchange space, the parking lot, can you just explain what that is? With the police department, the signs that are on the parking lot, the spaces?
It's like if you buy something, if I, if you buy something on Facebook or, what's the other one?
Craigslist.
Craigslist. They provide you a spot here because it's under camera to meet the party you're dealing with, because there's been several people that have been scammed, their material's been stolen, their money's been stolen, they've been beat up.
What a great idea, though, to offer that.
Yeah, it is a great idea.
Good.
A lot of towns are starting to do that.
Yeah, that's very good. We had a meeting about the Senior Center and about expansion of services, and we're still gathering some data about doing that, going into that one evening a month or a week or whatever. But I want to thank Dawn and Ed for coming to the meeting with Donna Falkenberry and Beth Blatt from the Senior Center. We have now decided to do a program on October 25th at 6:30 PM. And if you're approaching 65 years old and you're thinking about Medicare and what goes into choosing what plan you're going to use under Medicare and all that, she's having, I guess, a renowned expert in Medicare. It's Mary McGeeery. She's director of the State Health Insurance Assistance Program, which is called SHIP, and it's the New Jersey Division of Aging Services. So this is a real coup for us, for her, have her come out in the evening and speak to all of our residents, because you don't have to be a member of the Senior Center. We're opening this up to the community. I just had my sister-in-law turn 65, and a friend, and I'll tell you, there's a lot of choices out there in terms of medication, what's covered, what's not covered, what supplemental plan is the cheapest, what's the best. So there's a lot of logistics that go into that. So I would encourage anybody that's approaching that, you know, 65 years old, to attend this session, because she is the expert in this program and she can help guide whatever decisions you're going to make. So I wanted to publicize that. The other thing is, my registered nurses from St. Peter's University Hospital will be in the community within the next month at three different sites. We're going to have National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1st. The mobile health unit will be outside and we'll have some RNs doing screenings for blood pressure and blood sugar. We've been doing this ever since we started National Night Out here in the town, probably over 10 years now. And the other site we're going to be at is on August 7th at the library, no, Spotswood, yeah, at the library. We're doing blood pressure, blood sugar, cholesterol screenings at that site, and that's from 12 to 130, and that's on August 7th. And then on August 17th, at the Senior Center and at Woodmere, not Woodmere, it's Crescent Park, we're going to be doing skin cancer screenings. The nurse practitioner is coming out from St. Peter's, who works for me in community health services. So we'll be doing those skin cancer screenings by appointment through the Senior Center and also through Crescent Park, the management office, Tammy McGeechy. So I encourage you to take advantage of these free screenings. I think it's important to maintain your health no matter what age you are, right? Very important. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Marge. Jose?
I have nothing.
Terrific.
Okay. Just a couple things.
Terrific, yes.
Marge already mentioned National Night Out. It's going to be Tuesday, October the 1st, from 6 to 9 PM here. It's been...
August 1st.
What did I say?
October.
I'm sorry. The other October, August 1st. It'll be from 6 to 9 PM. The last few years, the turnout's been very well, so I hope people can attend. There may or may not be fireworks there. We're looking at something right now. And then in September, the month before October, REC is doing their 5K, and the money from that will be donated to a program in the high school. So if anybody would like to know more about that, you can go online and look on the REC. And that's it. Ed?
A few things. If you happen to live in the area of Latau and Herman Drive, please be advised that on Tuesday, July 18th, weather permitting, water service may be interrupted between the hours of 9 and 5 PM in order to do water main work. We have a problem over there. Residents may experience brown water for a temporary period of time after service is restored. We apologize for any inconveniences that may be caused during the shutdown. Should you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact Utility Office, 732-416-1827. On another note, as always, we're getting lovely letters about our police department. We got one from the New Jersey General Assembly. It goes to, "Dear Patrolman Sabatino, I'd like to commend you and your fellow officers for your participation in the 2017 Police Unity Tour. The ride you have participated in is a fantastic event that brings awareness and honors officers who have died in the line of duty, along with raising money for a great cause. The sacrifice that is made on a daily basis by yourself and other officers is applauded. Again, congratulations on the success of the unity tour, and thank you for your service and all you do to protect and serve the district. I wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. If you ever need any assistance, please feel free to call my office, Assemblyman Benson. Signed, Daniel Benson." And on a more personal note, apparently, a resident has written in, her name is Shelley Bloom, "To the two police officers who brought me and my wife lunch. I and my wife are flabbergasted, your unbelievable goodness. I jokingly asked our waitress to ask the two of you to pay for our lunch. When I asked her for my check and she told me that the two of you were paying for it, I couldn't believe it. And when I approached you, the two of you, you tried to stop you. I was completely shocked at your generosity. I want the both of you to understand that when I said to you, 'Thank you for your service', it was meant in the most meaningful of expressions. And it was from my heart, because I understand the dangers that you put yourselves in and the moments that you set your foot out the door of your home. Perhaps it is because I am part of a family of heroes. My father served our country for 22 years, 22 years, 12 years Army, 10 years Navy, working undercover for naval intelligence. I have three brothers who served in the Army during the Second World War. One was killed in France, one was wounded in the Battle of the Bulge, and the third came home unharmed. I served during the Korean War myself. So as I said, thank you for your service. I wish you nothing but the best for both of you and your families." It's always nice to get a little letter like that.
That was nice.
And I believe that's all I have.
Is there a motion to open to the public?
Motion to open to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're at the public portion of the meeting where you can discuss anything you'd like. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and where you're from.
Clearwater Village.
Can you just pull it?
Welcome to the mic, please.
Tess Snyder, Clearwater Village.
It's not, is it picking up?
It's not making it.
Hang on a second.
Yeah, I hear it.
Maybe just bring it a little closer.
My mouth is big enough, I probably don't even need it.
There it goes.
Now it's better.
Yeah.
Tess Snyder, Clearwater Village. I am having a horrible problem with my water. I've been up here, I don't know how many times. I have sand in my toilet tanks, and the smell of chlorine is enough to kill you. What can you do for me?
As we all looked down at Ed, I was informed this evening, on the way down here, is I saw you sitting in the front row. Where are we at with this? And I was told that our water department person, director's looking into it. He's been very busy, but he is looking into your situation. That's really not a great answer?
We have spent how much money on that tank?
On the water?
I know the last count that I was here for was $1,900,000. And we're still having problems?
Well, I'm not thinking, my own personal point of view, I'm not thinking at my level that the sand in your water is from that tank, because if the sand was from that tank, everybody would be getting sand.
They haven't. They're just afraid to come down here and say...
No, I don't mean just Clearwater, I mean everybody. And if they're afraid to come in, maybe there's something wrong with a main coming in, because right now, we're, as I just said, we're looking into another main problem that we found, that we're cutting a section out to see if it's got a crack under there. Might be the same situation by you, so we're going to have to investigate that as well.
The last time was a broken screen.
Now, keep in mind, the water lines that go to Clearwater run under railroad tracks, and nothing beats up water mains worse than railroad cars going down the rail, because that's an awful lot of weight. So like I said, that's another avenue for us to investigate. I'm not saying that's the answer.
No.
But we're continuing to look.
Okay. The chlorine?
Chlorine, that's a different story. Is there a problem with chlorine?
First, with hearing of it, would it be easy enough for them to go out and do, take a sample, do a chlorine residual test?
Last time you were here, didn't I mention them coming to take a sample of your water? Did they do that?
No. But they've been very busy, Dawn told me.
No, it only takes five minutes to come in and take a sample of water. If we can do that, send him over there, take a sample of water, and we'll get a direct count on your chlorine. And if it is really too high, which it probably is because of the smell, I've had that smell in my house.
(inaudible) water?
We'll find out why.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll still see you after the meeting.
We're sorry for your inconvenience.
Hello, Jackie Palmer, 9 Sheepen Street. When I was here two meetings ago, I had asked a question regarding a trust account for the EMS department. And I was adamantly told by the business administrator that that could not possibly be happening. I subsequently asked for the law that stated what the parameters were for those trust accounts to be set. What I was asking for absolutely fell within the law. And I also found out that we currently have 15 trust accounts within the Borough of Spotswood. So my question again is, are we able to set up a trust account for the EMS department to collect their donations, for the donations to be deposited in a trust account rather than into the general fund, which they don't normally get to use?
Let me ask you a question. You might know the answer to this. To my knowledge, the only paid entity, paid entity that raises money would be the police department, and I believe they do it through their local, right?
We have a trust account.
We have a trust account.
The Borough of Spotswood has a trust account.
For the police department?
Correct. It's correct.
Okay. And what do we do with that money?
It's for donations for community policing. And it was approved by the state.
Okay. Can we do the same thing for EMS?
We can try to submit something through the state, but I have been told that it's typically not approved. And I can also tell you that there's not a lot of donations that do come to EMS. What do we do with the donations that do come to EMS? They get deposited into the revenue account. Into this EMS revenue account or the general fund? EMS revenue. EMS revenue. So when they purchased the Toughbooks that they purchased, where did that money? They did not purchase Toughbooks. Or with Apples? iPads? An iPad. Okay. Whatever it is that they were purchasing to do their electronic, where did that money come out of? That came out of a bond ordinance that was approved, oh my goodness, 2015, 2016? Don't quote me. Back up, because now I'm confused. So we just purchased iPads for EMS? Yes. This year? We purchased one, it's a trial program. It isn't even live yet. And we approved a bond ordinance to purchase that iPad in 2015? We approved a bond ordinance in 2015 because EMS Charts, which is the free charting system that's provided by the state, had announced that they were going offline and that any agencies utilizing that would have to buy their own charting program. So we did provide for it at that time. And at the last hour, the state came through and continued the EMS charting system, so that those funds were not used. We stayed with EMS Charts. So how mu, I'm sorry, how much was it for the iPad that we purchased? I believe it was close to $1,000. We gave extra care and the rugged pack with it to protect it. And we got a $1,000 donation last year from Schweitzer for EMS, as well as in 2015, right? Yes. And we used bond money to purchase a $1,000 iPad? No, we had appropriated bond money for a whole new EMS charting system. That was expected to be significantly more than $1,000. What our current EMS director is doing is he's testing a trial program for a new charting system that will generate more revenue, and it'll be integrated into our CAD system as well. Okay. So back to my original question. I believe that we do receive donations for EMS, and probably more people would donate to the EMS, knowing that they would utilize the funds for EMS, not into the general fund, because... If a donation is received with a specific caveat, that they want it used, say, for medical supplies, that donation is deposited into the EMS budget account and it is utilized to spend for medical supplies. Has to be spent for the specific purpose it is granted. When Schweitzer donated money to us, there was no specific caveat as to what it was
When Schweitzer donated money to us, there was no specific caveat as to what it was to be used for.
It didn't say EMS?
No, it did not.
I think I have a copy of that letter.
It said EMS.
Oh, it did? I thought it did.
Let me correct myself. It said EMS, but it did not say Tough.
But so where did that money go? Because I think I asked you the last time, so...
And I'll answer you the same way. The revenue account.
No, last time you told me it went into the general fund.
Revenue, EMS.
Okay. So then what happens to that money when we don't spend all of the budget money in EMS, like we haven't done over the past three years?
When we don't spend all of the budget money, it goes into surplus the following year, not the immediate year after.
So if they underrun their budget, so that money just goes to somebody else that we, that was set for EMS?
It goes to surplus.
Right.
And surplus goes to offset taxes.
We've never offset our taxes at all in the past, as long as I've lived here. But anyway, our taxes always go up.
Paying attention then in all the budget presentations, because revenue coming into the budget is surplus.
Oh, I, listen...
And it's specifically delineated in the budget documents.
Ms. Business Administrator, I am well aware of how things work.
Are we going somewhere with this?
I'm asking, I'm waiting for the answer to my question on whether or not we are going to be able to apply to have. What is the problem? I don't understand. We have 15 trust accounts.
We can apply, and it is the state's discretion. I provided you with the guidance from the state for the management of these accounts.
Correct. And what did it say? It said, "Very bold donations were an acceptable purpose."
And I'm telling you, we have not received many donations. If you would like to try, you can possibly speak to the mayor, and maybe he would be...
Can I, I'm sorry, can I not speak to her anymore? Because every time I come here, she's the most disrespectful person when she comments to me.
You know what?
I'm asking a question!
You're asking a question, she's answering your question. And every time you guys, every time you guys talk to each other, it goes back and forth and back and forth.
So then, somebody answer the question. When I ask a question, you all turn and ask.
She's answering your question, Jackie.
Let me take control here for one second.
She's answering your question.
I talked to Joe Zangar, CFO. Respect Joe Zangar, good man. And I asked him about this same situation we're discussing right now. In Joe's opinion, now, we're still gonna try it, okay? But in Joe's opinion, we're gonna get denied. He told me we would get denied if it wasn't specific. So we have to decide how we're gonna make it specific if we get a donation. So yes, we can do that. That's the answer to your question.
You did have an EMS committee that we had put together.
That's the answer to your question, right?
Yes, yes, that we can do that, and that's something we're going to look into. That's the answer to the question.
There you go.
That's all I asked for.
That's the answer.
I didn't need the whole back and forth.
I know.
Now, and if we want to go back into the money, I'm curious to know who's gonna take responsibility for the $40,875 that we have to pay back to the federal government for the dock?
No, we don't have to pay that back right now. You're a little misinformed on that. That's being currently worked on. That's coming from my mouth to your ear.
Is that, we're building a dock, or we're trying to work around figuring out how to...
I am currently working with our Office of Emergency Manager, and we have, gonna put it towards the lake. Let's put it that way. Can't give you a definite description right now, but I can tell you, we're most likely, if we do things right, we may not lose this. And that's what we're fighting for.
We may not lose it.
Well, you know, I gotta be honest. I have to be honest.
Of course. That's all I'm asking you to do, Ed. That's all I ask.
But I think we have a good fighting chance of keeping it.
We've been fighting for a lot of things for a lot of years. There's a lot of trip-ups.
But in my opinion, and just in my general opinion, to put that money back in that dock would have been a waste of our money.
I am not disagreeing with you, although back then, we could have at this point gotten five years or six, seven years of use out of it.
If it stayed together, yeah, probably.
But we didn't.
The last week, for that amount of money was the problem. We tried.
Well, the problem was, is that it was an old bid. So when the dock actually got damaged, rather than putting the appropriate money that we needed, or going out to bid to find out exactly how much it would cost after, right, the damage was done...
We bid that out three times, four times, thr— twice before the storm ever happened. So then it was worse after that?
Correct. But we didn't bid it after the storm.
Obviously would have been more.
Correct. So if we would have bid it, we would have asked for the proper amount of money from the federal government instead of half of it.
It was only a percentage they covered from that, correct, Dawn?
75%.
They cover 75%, but the request was only for $54,000, and the bids came in at $90,000 after. The first set of bids came in at $55,000 or whatever it was. But then, when you went out to bid after the storm, everybody needed storm work done. Twice as much now. So we submitted the incorrect amounts to the federal government to get the right. And then we never spent the money, but we got it. That's just, thank you for answering that question. I wish you would have answered that before I had to get my blood pressure raised.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about the lake, Ed?
Sure.
EMS permits, are we, I mean EMS, God.
Don't do that.
The lake permits, are we still have the permits current?
Our permits are current until 2018.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And yes, we can apply for extension.
Okay.
Anybody else like to come forward?
Anybody else? Hello, you got it. Yeah, right.
My name's Kathy Park. Born and raised here in town, Kevin's sister. Just listening to Jackie questioning you guys, I just wanted to ask, on the EMS money, when and if they do get donations, and you do your budget, and you have your surplus at the end of the year, are the donations included in the surplus and then held over for a year that they can't be used? Or could the donations be used at any time if there's a request for them?
EMS revenue is anticipated in the budget, a certain amount?
I do budget accounting, so I'm aware of that.
Yeah. So a certain amount of revenue is anticipated in the budget, offsets the budget expenses for EMS.
Correct. Are donations as a part or estimated budget item for income?
As part of the revenue, yes.
There is a...
But like I said, if a donation is for a specific item, it goes directly into that budget account, and it has to be utilized for that specific item.
For that money. It's put into a reserve?
No, it has to be utilized within that budget year.
Okay. And what if it's not used in that year? Like, what if my family were to get together and donate $1,500 to the MS for iPads? And they don't buy the iPads. Say we do the donation this year, and they don't do the iPads until next year, when this lady decides that the program they're using now is gonna work, we need the extra equipment. Because they didn't spend that money in '17, they're gonna lose it?
Well, I would think that before accepting a donation, specifically for something that the EMS director isn't sure that they could do, they would not accept that donation for an iPad. They might say, "Listen, I'm not sure if we're going to do the iPad purchase before the end of the year. Perhaps we'd like to donate for something different."
Why is there...
That would be in the EMS director's opinion.
Okay. My question would be then, why wouldn't there be a reserve set up to hold those funds? Because the money's in the bank. You don't want to put it through surplus, because surplus ends up going through general fund. And then that can be used to lower the tax dollars the next year's budget, okay? But the donations, even if Joe Blow wants to donate $50, and somebody else wants to, that money really should be held as a donation, as a reserved funds for donations to be used at any time for, I mean, I'm just saying. I do fire district accounting, I do other fire company accounting, and it, any money that, you know, they feel that's been, like you said, allotted to or specified for, or if the EMS comes before the board, or the fire district comes before the commissioners and states, we have X amount of money donated, we would like to do this with it. And then that fund should be, that amount of money should be put into a reserve before the close of the year, not just buried into surplus. Because then it wouldn't be put into the tax dollars, like you said, for, the surplus is being used a year and a half later to lower that tax money. Because you really don't know what your surplus is for two years down the road. I totally understand that. So, but I'm just questioning, you know, if, I think more people would probably donate and get more involved if they knew that the money they were donating wasn't gonna be to really help tax dollars, but to help them get stuff that the tax dollars can't do. Like you said, there was money allotted for these, what do you call it, ToughPads or whatever, a couple of years ago.
For a charting system.
Exactly. How much money did we apply for? Was it a huge sum?
Years ago, so I don't want to guess.
So a couple of thousand dollars?
Um, no, it was probably actually more in the neighborhood of the dock. God, I don't want to nail down to what it made...
No, no problem. I'm just...
Probably $15,000 to $20,000.
Did we ever receive that money, or is the money being held by the state until we decide what we're doing?
It wasn't a grant, it was a bond ordinance.
It was a bond ordinance, okay.
That we never expended.
So it's sitting until they decide what they're gonna do. So it's basically...
Until either it's canceled or expenditures are made on it.
Okay. So the money's there. If they decide this charting system is what they want to do, they have to come before you guys and take that fund?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. But I was just curious about the other thing, because I know that you can reserve money. I mean, if they get a sizable, even the Schweitzer's donation, figure every year, $1,000, that's $3,000. They've lost that money because they didn't spend it on something. And the EMS should be, should know that they have that money sitting there in case they need to use it for something. I mean, $3,000 may not be enough for, you know, but what they could do for it with regards to supplies, or even things that they need themselves for being in the building for an extended period of time, just like the volunteers need, the firefighters need additional things other than what they ask the borough for. But it's something to think about. I mean, when they, when the...
We need the state account in order to establish that reserve.
You would have to open up the checking account to do that?
No, we would have to establish a dedication by rider.
Okay.
Account with the state's permission.
Okay.
What the mayor was explaining.
Okay. So then you have to ask the state if it's okay if we set up an account so that we can reserve the donations received by the people of the town, or the businesses of the town for the EMS use, not to roll into surplus. I think it's something you should look into. I really do. I really do.
We will look into it. When we get a response, we'll bring it back to the public.
Yeah, because you may figure you already had, you would already had $3,000 sitting for three years, rolling over just from Schweitzer's if the money wasn't used yet. And I mean, it may not seem like much, but it, every little bit helps. And I understand about reducing the tax part of it. Whatever left over does go into the general budget. And, you know, the EMS starts to clean the next year, you know, and then it moves from there. But you answered my question, but it's just...
You have to understand one thing. In previous years, those EMS budgets have never been hit. They've turned money back at the end of the year.
Yeah. That's, they've had surplus, yeah.
They haven't spent all of the money that was allocated.
That they were allotted, mhm.
So now we're anticipating they're gonna burn through this money that we're allocating now, between training, between equipment, between...
Oh, more so.
...recycling themselves.
Exactly. No, I totally understand that.
So when the donations came...
Before or not?
Didn't really matter, because they went into something that wasn't even fully utilized to begin with.
Yeah, the extra money just barreled through and ended up with the tax thing. It really didn't stay. They don't have a budget that rolls through, that their surplus doesn't roll back to them every year, kind of goes into the general fund. So if it was rolling through for them, we wouldn't have had to spend additional money this year, because they would have had that surplus rolling every year.
Your logic is based on, and I understand where you're coming from, fire districts, which are a separate entity.
No, it's based on fund accounting. I was, I was just using the fire districts as an example.
But you're using fire districts, which are taxing districts, that, you know, whatever money they have, they roll back. Where, you know, they don't have what we...
They're rolling it, yeah, they're rolling it forward. You could make it separate if you just wanted to, but they're working off of you guys. So basically, that's how it...
It's a little bit of a different system. And the responsibility is a little bit different than what we have here.
So there were a couple of years where there was extra money left over because of the fact they didn't spend what they were supposed to spend, and now all of a sudden they may go over this year. So there won't be that little extra.
More than likely, they're gonna use up what they have this year.
What they have, yeah.
Absolutely.
And they should. I mean, the funds are there, and they're allotted to them. They should figure out what they need to do to do them. But, I mean, with regards to the donations, though, it is something to look into, especially down the road. If this thing gets rolling, you know, it really would be a good thing to let the people know that, you know, you give it, they're gonna be able to use it for what they need to use it for. But I appreciate yous all listening. Thank you very much. I just wanted to know that.
Can I make a comment as EMS liaison? Kathy and Jackie, thank you for those good questions. I certainly, you know, you spoke to Joe, Ed. Did he give a reason why he thinks it's gonna be turned down, or did he not give a reason? He just said from his general experience?
From his general experience, but that doesn't mean we can't ask. If they tell us no, tell us no. At least they'll tell us why they told us no.
Yeah. I agree. I think...
We don't guess on the answer anymore.
You know, we're moving forward with some of the recommendations that the committee made, and I think that having a reserved account for EMS expenses, I know myself, when it was volunteer, you know, when they were so helpful to me with the kids being young and three boys getting hurt, they were always at my house. So it, I made donations to the first aid squad, but that was a whole different structure when they were volunteer. So, thank you, Ed. I think, Dawn, too, thank you for doing that. But if we can set it up, that's not something for Jackie to do, that's something for us to do as a borough.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah. So I would not want the onus on her to do anything with this account. I mean, we would set it up ourselves, I hope. So thank you, everybody, for a good discussion. And, you know, we have the full-time director now of EMS, and we're hoping to see a lot of improvements in the EMS services and in the structure. So, so, thank you. That's it.
Good evening. Kevin B., 218 and Outman Road. Hello. Now that you brought this up, last time I was here, we were talking about putting a committee together for EMS to find out, research what avenue to go down as far as keeping your own, keeping it in-house, or going out and outsourcing it to a private agency. I'm done with my insanity of seven days a week and all that crazy stuff, so I'm a little bit more around now. So where are we at with that? Because I do know you put a committee together, and has anything been, again, this has just been reminded by all this stuff that's going on now, is there any progress at all, or is the EMS...
We presented on May 8th. I think it was May 8th, right? We presented the committee report.
I believe so, yeah.
And it's on the website, Cap.
In a nutshell?
We presented probably six or eight items to, that we recommended to be, you know, implemented, and we've already started addressing some of them. But Ed, do you want us...
Sure. We have currently appointed a full-time director.
Okay.
As of January 1st this coming year, with the new budget, all the other numbers that we discussed through the report of supervisors and EMTs will be all adjusted at that time. Because right now, it's not in the total budget, because operating budget and...
It's not in the EMS budget.
It's not in the EMS budget, because operating expenses is different than salary and wages. So salary and wages are not enough to support us at this time. This is under the direction of my CFO as well. We just don't have enough money to pay every EMT what we'd like to pay them right now. So we have, we want to implement it on July, on January 1st, the whole program. But already, the director has been taken care of. He is a full-time employee with benefits.
Okay. So it sounds like you're trying to keep it in-house?
Yes, sir. That would be the answer to your question. Yes, sir.
Good. I like that decision. I think that's great. Gives the borough itself a lot more control. And again, being on the public safety side on the fireside, you know, we work with EMS a ton of times. They're a good crew. But I've seen Monroe and how that's structured, and I asked a lot of questions about that one also. And if you've got, I don't know who the director you hired is, hopefully he or she will be able to utilize the resources to the best financially. Because I think that you don't need, if you go to Monroe, everybody thinks that they have all full-time employees, and they don't. They use a lot of per diem people, like policemen, other EMTs from other towns, and so on and so forth. And they come in and work for $19 an hour with no Bennys. And you can staff a lot of shifts with already experienced people that have been on a job for 10, 15 years to pick it up extra cash, just doing it, okay? Because they have their full-time job, and then they come and work a shift or two here. I'd like to see us get involved more that way with...
Kevin, I'll just give you a quick synopsis. The full-time is EMS director.
Right.
There'll be part-time supervisors.
Right.
Four is the level right now. The four is the number currently. And the majority of our EMTs are going to be per diem. But they're gonna be per diem at a more competitive rate.
Bingo.
So we can keep them.
Yeah. That's awesome.
And as to your question about Mr. Nichols, who is our current director, he's hired quite a few people thus far, and for the majority have worked out rather well. And they're a little more mature.
Great. That's awesome.
And they see the light at the end of the tunnel, is what they were looking for.
So moving forward, looking good.
So we're moving forward. Maybe not as fast as some people would like to, but government never does.
No, it never does. I'm content. I think it's great. I mean, I was here five, six months ago talking about this, and you gave me a good answer tonight, and I think that's great. And I think you guys are going in a great direction. I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come forward?
Make a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do have a closed session this evening, whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from the meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the borough of Spotswood County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of any action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: contract negotiations and personnel. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public when confidentiality is no longer required. This resolution shall take effect immediately,